All right, at this point, Paul will probably jump in at some point, but we'll start without him. Welcome, everybody. This is the Zoom meeting of the Southampton Planning Board for Wednesday, September 2nd, and all members are present at this point except for Paul Fergal. And we want to welcome our newly, and I mean newly elected on a write-in ballot yesterday, Dan LaBalle is here to join the board, and we welcome you, Dan.
Thank you very much. I try my best.
And once again, we want to thank Jim Labrie, who stepped down after two terms, and wish him well and thank him for all his service to the town. The first item agenda tonight is an A and R that was submitted by Thomas Labrie for the east side of College Highway and Valley Road, Lot 2A and 2B, a portion of 2A actually. And I'll bring that up, but as you people will recall, those on the board previously... Excuse me, Matt. Just hold a minute, I'll see if I can send Paul something. Actually, I guess he said he just got it. So let's see here. Waiting to let him in, so let's see, I've got permission here. Got you, Paul. Hi, Paul.
No video, Paul, no audio.
Can you hear me?
Hey, Paul, I can hear you. How you doing?
Oh, good, thank you.
Sorry about that, I had some difficulties trying to get on.
Right. Sorry for the delay, but again, I'm going back now. We're starting with an A and R from Tom Labrie for the east side of Valley Road. A little background here. You all remember Christ Community Church that we approved over a year ago on the corner of College Highway and Valley Road?
Yes.
Yep, I remember that.
Yeah. It's the site with the great drainage, or the great perk.
It's been for sale.
Well, one parcel, one parcel was... Can everybody see the map, number one?
Not yet.
No, huh? What am I doing wrong? Guess I gotta go back and share the screen, maybe?
Yep.
All right, now can you see it?
Yep. Well, we can see your screen. The file hasn't opened.
Can you see it?
We can't see the file yet, just your...
What am I doing wrong? I pressed Share the Screen.
Yeah, we can see the screen, but we can't see the file. You gotta open the file.
Do you perhaps have multiple screens?
So tell me, Paul, do I go to file, open the file first, or share the screen first?
You're muted, Paul.
I would probably open the file first and then share.
I can't seem to... Oh, wait a minute, here it is. Is it there?
Looks like yes.
Okay, you got it now?
We got a corner of it. Yeah, there you go.
Okay. All set?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. The Labries are here, Mark and Tom Labrie are both here on the line, and I'd ask Mark to just give a brief description of what they are looking for. Lot 2B is what they're requesting to be taken from Lot 2A, which is the only remaining lot there, because Christ Community sold the corner lot on Valley Road and College Highway several months ago. So they're asking Christ Community to purchase a portion of that triangle there that will abut their properties, both Mark and Bill Labrie, and I believe that's what they're looking for. But Mark, I'll ask you to explain.
Yes, well, I currently own the lot to the left of Lot 2A, that square, and we're looking to purchase that funny shape of Lot 2B, so that my lot and my brother, William Labrie, and my father, Thomas Labrie, can all be connected. The remaining Lot 2A will still be owned by Christ Community Church and will be its own buildable lot, but the lot that we're purchasing will be on its own and it will not be a buildable lot.
Any questions from the board, Paul, Keith, or Cindy? Dan?
Where's, can you touch, where's College Highway?
Right here.
I see the road.
Right here.
Oh, right there, okay.
And here's Valley.
Yeah.
And Christ Community, when they bought the property for the church back then, they owned all of this, except for Mark's house, which is on the left. But they bought all that for their church and decided to not do that, and subsequently, they bought this corner, they sold this corner lot to Berkshire Omega Corporation, and then they retained what was left here, and now that's a portion of what the Labries want to purchase from them.
So are they here at the planning board to ask if it's okay to purchase it, or are they here because they're gonna build on it?
Because it's a, because Christ Community is subdividing the land.
Oh, I see, okay.
You see what I mean? They're not, it's a non-buildable lot, they're just, Christ Community is getting rid of it, and for good, good reason, because it's more important to the Labries, it really does nothing for them, and yet it still leaves them a buildable lot on College Highway.
Okay, so right now, you're, the question before the board is subdividing the lot, that's the parcel.
They're just asking for approval, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Keith, Paul, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, just a little background for Dan, where he's no, so we see a lot of these approval not required submissions, Dan, and the reason for it is the state of Massachusetts and the town of Southampton have subdivision control regulations. And so this technically is a subdivision of land, but it is not a, I guess when most people think subdivision, they think, okay, it's a large tract of land, we're gonna be creating, you know, 10 building lots.
Right, right.
It's not that.
Yep.
So that's why it's submitted as an approval not required under the subdivision control law.
Hey, thank you for giving me the background, that's really helpful to understand.
Yeah, we see a lot of these where it's just shifts in property boundaries. In this case, it's, you know, really, it's a shift of property boundary to create or add on to an existing lot. There's no new lots created. If there was a new lot to be created, as long as that lot met the dimensional requirements for this particular zone, then I think there would be a fee to the applicant that would be required. I think the fee per lot is $100 per new building lot, but that is not the case here. What we've seen in the past as well is, you know, there'd be an existing lot on, we'll just say Route 10, that has 2,000 feet of frontage, and that 2,000 feet of frontage could equate to 15 building lots. So that's, that would be, again, that would be an approval not required submission, because the applicant's not creating a new road to serve those new 15 lots. It would be existing frontage on an existing road, it's just that they're creating new building lots. So in that case, you know, it would be 14 new lots created or a $1,400 fee. So those are essentially the differences. We see a lot of these where it's just a shift in lots. We see a lot of applications where there's an existing large tract of land that's divided, that creates new building lots, and then maybe we see on average two, maybe three true subdivisions every year, where it's a new road going in with new building lots. That has its own process defined by the subdivision regulations, so.
Hey, that's great, that really helps, helps me, you know, get an understanding of, and perspective on this, so thank you.
Yep. So Paul, I have nothing further at this point. I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R.
Any other further questions from board members? Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded, yep.
Motion made and seconded by Paul. Any other further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, Mark, I will sign these forms tomorrow, and I've gotta go to Town Hall to drop off paperwork, and I'll swing up by the house, Tom's house on Valley, and drop those plans off to you.
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And Paul, just for your information, Dan got elected yesterday and sworn in today, so he's on board with us for the five-year term that Jim just left.
For eternity? Welcome aboard, Dan.
Thank you, sir.
It's gotta feel like that sometimes.
Yeah. So far, what has been like, well, we've been on this for like a year already? What was it?
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, and I don't know how you want to handle it, I downloaded all of that stormwater bylaw that we discussed at the last meeting with a presentation from Patty Gambreing of PVPC. I made some notes on certain sections, but how do you, how do you want to proceed with that, and is there any sections or paragraphs that you think need to, the language, the wording needs to change, or be deleted, or edited? What's your thoughts on this, how are we gonna present this tonight?
Is, is anyone on this call from PVPC, or is it just us?
No, Patty made her presentation, and now it's, it's up to, she'll come back, I'm sure. She offered her help going forward. Maybe after we look it over and when it gets to public hearing, perhaps, maybe we want Patty present there for any kind of technical questions, but...
At the end of her PowerPoint, which she forwarded to everybody, there was recommended next steps, and I wonder, can you call it up, Paul, or is it necessary to call it up to show the next steps that were suggested?
Let's see here.
I, because I was trying to, you know, be good, I read through, and I had just two comments I came up with.
You want me to just scroll through this quickly?
Well, he's got his comments. What are your comments, Dan?
Oh, my two comments were where we talk about culverts. The only thing we mentioned is culvert sizing, and just because I've had a lot of culvert assessment training, and there's a lot more to putting in the culvert than just the sizing. So I think that if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about that, we should embellish a little more about, about culverts, or refer to a different document that gives more guidance.
Well, the whole process was in order to meet the, you know, the MS4 compliance. Do you know if your recommendations are consistent with that, Dan, or are they different? I mean, is it just an embellishment?
I don't know enough, I don't know, I don't know against the MS4 compliance if my comments would have any bearing, so I can't answer that.
My sense from going to the meetings was that what we're looking for is the basic compliance, and we also have this, this public comment period, period of time that we can talk about, you know, how we want to embellish or whatever. Paul, have you got, Paul Fergal, have you got ideas on this?
The culvert or other, or going through the document?
What?
Hold on a second. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Do you mean going through the culvert discussion, or going through the comments that are on the screen?
Well, I was, I was thinking, if you want, because Keith, I don't, wasn't present for it, I can just skip through this PowerPoint quickly, if you can read it, and then get to those points of next action that Cindy was talking about, but... And then, Dan, did you happen to denote which chapter and paragraph that those culvert regs were in on it?
Yeah, let's see if I still have that open. Let's see if I can find it. Um, hydro lot, what document I'm in first, because there is two of them.
So you want me to bring up the document and forget this PowerPoint?
I mean, if, I guess, maybe we're outside the time where we're looking for draft suggestions, perhaps. I mean, I might just be coming late to the game, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna derail a process, a train that's already far down the tracks, you know?
No, 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 not at all, because this has to go to, it's in our lap now to edit it as best we can, and then it goes back to public hearing, and it'll probably be edited again before the final version is voted on and goes to town meeting. So no, you're, you've still got time.
Okay, so I'm looking at the draft stormwater management and erosion control regulations document, the draft from June 17th, and I was on page 29, and it just said culvert capacities, and I was like, whoa, don't you want to describe more than that?
What's the section title for that section?
Yeah. Contents of Stormwater Management Plan. It always says two contents of Stormwater Management Plan.
So usually when a culvert is proposed, particularly if it's a subdivision project, or if there's a larger scale culvert that's being put underneath the roadway that's conveying, you know, water as part of a string, and that's a much bigger animal that goes, that goes through Conservation Commission, right, and other, potentially other entities. So the context of that section, which I'm not really sure I know what that section is in relation to, but culverts, you know, have a very wide range of meanings, and usually when we see culverts in our review, so for example, a couple weeks ago, we had a project that showed a culvert underneath a driveway that was not sized for any particular storm or anything, it was just there to convey water, as it might run down the side of a roadway ditch, and then ultimately convey down to a structure downstream.
Right.
I'm not sure if that section is pertaining to a particular case like that.
Right, yeah, where it's just for, yeah, should be. You're probably right.
Hydraulic connection, right? So typically, if there's a culvert that's being put in for drainage purposes, that is a large-scale project, i.e. let's say new subdivision comes in and the culvert needs to be installed from one side of the road to another side of the road, that's a much bigger animal in terms of providing a stormwater report that's consistent with Massachusetts, you know, general guidance when it comes to best practices for stormwater management. So that's where that would fall in. Without seeing the context, I really can't say what that means exactly, but, you know, I'm just trying to paint a picture of what that could potentially mean.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you. I mean, it's just, it's just, all it has is one line, and I was like, so I'd imagine that, you know, there has, there'd have to be more for a number of things in that section. Not just, not just culverts. Do they talk about anything else?
So you're looking at the...
Dan, am I on the right page there?
Let me, let me see. I don't see, I see a picture of a truck. I don't see a document.
You're in, you're still in the PowerPoint, Paul, demon.
I am?
Yeah, or at least on our screens.
So I'm looking at the draft bylaws right now on my stormwater management erosion and sediment control bylaw. Dan, you said it's section...
If you just search for the word culvert, it only appears one place in the document, so.
What page is it on, Dan, again?
29, with the comments.
Okay.
So you're not, you're not seeing the draft that I've got up here now, Town of Southampton Stormwater Management?
Nope.
Why is that?
So, Dan, unfortunately, I'm looking this on the, on an iPhone.
Okay.
So...
Is that it now?
Yes. That's the document.
So is that, were you referring?
What's the page, 29?
Just that one little line that says culvert?
Yeah, there's only one, one line, and all they're talking about is velocity, or flow rate, I think, and I was like, well, there's, there's more than that, I want to consider.
So this is the section right here?
I was...
Right here? Is that it?
Yeah, V-I-I.
Yep.
I-I.
Under F on that, on that section. So what are you proposing to expand on that?
Well, I guess my question is, are these just culverts for the event, for, for stormwater, right? Or are they for, culverts for, say, for...
Paul, I'm sorry, Paul. Dan, that section right there, so basically, it's asking for an H&amp;H design calculations for pre-development and post-development conditions. So the calculations that you would do for that section when you're doing a typical stormwater study, that's basically saying, you know, you would, you would consider that culvert as part of the analysis process of your entire system, so.
Okay.
To me, I feel that's complete. It's just a section, it's just a...
Just a checklist, correct?
Yeah, it's just shall include, it doesn't say, you know...
Yeah, you're right. I'm getting it now. That's right, they're saying, make account for X, Y, and Z in your calculation.
Shall include the following, yeah.
Yep, cool.
What was the other one you had?
Oh, and then there was, there was talk about farming, right, and there was mention of different types of farms, and specifically concerning fertilizers, right? Is there any discussion about concern over fertilizer runoff during, during storm conditions?
Have you, you know which section that is, or page number?
It was just a section about farming. I'd have to find it. It, it might have been in the other document. It was a description of what...
You mean the PowerPoint, Dan, or what other document?
No, there's, there's two different ones, Cindy, that...
I'm looking at two drafts from 69. two drafts from six-nine. Okay.
This would be agricultural activities on page three of the uh, drafts sedimentation control bylaw.
I got it, yeah. These are under definitions, correct? That section on section three? Yeah.
So it just made me think of, well, um, a large concern with farming is, is the, the use of fertilizers, right? And fertilizers into the water supply.
Right.
Um, especially during, you know, a, a, a storm condition, that's when that, that would occur, so. Um, something to think about.
So where's that? Is, do we have that up, Paul?
Is that, is that the same one I've got up now on page three?
Page three.
Or is that a different one?
It's the.
I think it's a different one, Paul.
Different document?
Yeah, the other one that was on the website.
Yeah, it's um, the other draft. There was one and drafts one and two, I think. Yeah, there you go, it's one.
That's where I just came from, I think.
Oh.
I think it might be, no, I think it's the other one.
So if it's page three, it's probably a pluggability section, right, I was thinking, yes.
Yeah, it's not that one.
It's, uh, Paul forgot, it's still under the definition section, I think that's what he's referring to on.
Yep, it's in the definition section.
Yeah, undermined, it's called Draft One. I may have renamed it. But you're talking, I think, Dan, you're talking about the definition for agricultural activity, producing or raising one or more of the following agricultural commodities for commercial purposes. And they talk about animals, fruits, vegetables, berries, nuts, maple, and then feed, seed, forage, tobacco, flowers, sod, et cetera. And what, you know, this is strictly defining what agricultural activities are. Yeah, there you go, Paul, that's good, right there. So what is it you think could, I mean, I'm in favor of making sure we don't have agricultural runoff, but this is strictly just definition right here.
Yeah, I, I understand it's definition, but, but it triggered me to think about, well, what you said, agricultural runoff. And my question would be, is that covered in our, in our overall, in the bylaw somewhere?
Okay, well, here's what I'm thinking, we had representation from the Conservation Commission, Art Lawrence was on this committee. Uh, and um, we had representation from not only him, but highway and town administrator.
The Agricultural Commission?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Um, but doesn't this fall under Conservation Commission, under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act? That's where I'm thinking that this, this oversight will occurred by the Conservation Commission. That I believe this just is a definition under this section, it's important, but isn't that where Conservation Commission's oversight comes in?
Yeah, we don't have any bylaws.
Well, um, we're, we, all of us have to fall under various Massachusetts laws. And this one's the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, it's, it's not strictly town bylaws. That's my understanding, I mean, we, we have. Only scenes regarding what's defined within the, the state laws.
So, so here's, here's, this is, this is just luck of the draw right here with the page, the section that Paul just left. The very last bottom section talks about BMP's best management practices, right? Um, one of the, the very last line says, um, they can also be non-structural practices that reduce pollutants at their source. Right, so pollutants obviously would classify what a um, fertilizer is in, in, in the handbook as, as defined within the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. So to me, that's, that's covered by the Stormwater Management um, Handbook that Mass, Massachusetts has, if I'm not mistaken, because that's, that's a pollutant.
Right, okay.
I'm gonna insert something here, having been in those six or seven meetings that I was in. We, we talked a lot about how and you remember Patty saying in some regards, we're, we're sort of ahead of the curve compared to some other communities. We're not a hundred percent there, but we got, we have work to do, but we're, we're doing pretty well in Southampton. But a lot of our discussion in those meetings had to do with compliance and had to do with oversight and responsibility and who are the enforcing bodies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So um, you know, a lot falls on the Conservation Commission. Here we are as the planning board, we're needing to look at these things and understand whether we have the language in there so that maybe whomever is responsible for the compliance piece has something to grab onto and can, can enforce. Uh, I know we're not an enforcement agency or, or an enforcement arm in the planning board, but I, I think that we should look at all of this in terms of whether we have strength of enforcement.
Well, that's the problem I had with some of the language in some of the sections that I picked out. Yes, we are the, we are the Stormwater Authority Body, where we accept the applications, we hold the public hearings. We have the site inspections, the peer reviews. And when we sign off on it up until this point, and that's what's happening now, that's where our authority so-called ends. Going forward, since we don't have a town department and a paid staff um to do yearly inspections, like I believe I've read in here that are gonna be required, they're periodic. Now, if somebody files a complaint, like we, the only one I can remember is over on Nicholas Lane or Woodmar at some point where a neighbor had filed a complaint that they, they thought that the stormwater unit wasn't operating or functioning properly, so they brought that complaint to us, I believe, through the building inspector. So we looked into that, but we had no knowledge of that unless the neighbor brought it to our attention. So some of these existing uh, stormwater uh, systems in subdivisions, um, I have no idea if the homeowners association is having those checked yearly, because again.
So.
I don't have a file that tells me, okay, this is the time of year where I have to check on this one, this one, and this one, we don't have staff, so.
Okay, so that came up a lot in these discussions, exactly what you're saying, Paul. Who, who is checking with homeowners associations, are they compliant with their own, you know, rules and regs or whatever their, their homeowner's document is? And there was one other example, which I believe preceded my time on the board, and that was up on Cheryl Lane, is that right? There was a sort of a runoff situation and uh, is it Moosebrook that's perpendicular to Cheryl Lane and um, that you may, some of you that preceded me on the board might remember that. And uh, that, that was part of our discussion as well, we could only go back to anecdotes and to examples that we talked about. But the concept of who does the, who does the oversight and who does the enforcement was absolutely constantly brought up in these meetings, it was a frustration. Uh, Randall said the same thing you're saying, Paul, I don't have the staff to do all this stuff. And, and, and Art was saying, I don't, you know, CONCOM only has so many resources, so.
I don't expect, I don't think you can expect a volunteer, non-paid board without any staff
Yeah.
to monitor this, I'm, 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 I'm sure of that. I mean, I, I'm sure the town departments, uh, whether it's building or highway, you know, they're, they're probably strapped or whatever, but on the same token, they, they, they are a department of the town, the stormwater directly affects the streets, which is the highway department. So um, between the building inspector and highway, I would think there'd have to be a, a, a system somewhere to have these inspected once a year to, to function, if that's what, if that's what this bylaw is calling for.
How do we, how do we bring forth that concern? I, I can only agree with you, we're a volunteer board and, yeah, you, all of you are real knowledgeable and, and I'm still learning, but um.
Well, the three, you know, Keith, Paul, and now Dan are more familiar with stormwater and, and its technicalities than you and I are, we're in the, we're in the dark.
You got that right.
So I'm.
But we wanna, we wanna be compliant and we also wanna, we wanna support homeowners that they're not gonna see damage on their properties or.
Alright, so.
Or environment.
So I think we're really getting into the weeds and we're talking about something that we don't have full answer of. So, you know, we've taken steps as, as a town that precede my time on the board with creation of homeowner associations that have responsibilities associated with, with the maintenance and the upkeep of their systems, they're the owners, they're legally responsible, that's something that's registered with the Register of Deeds and it's, it's been um, in, in their court since, since I I don't know how long, but since I've been on the board, it's always been the case. So that clearly is their responsibility, for us to be a police force and to be checking in and having some member of the town um, to check in on it, I, I think is um, is, is impossible. However, I think to assure that there's reminders, we have to potentially look at solutions that include having a provision or a condition of approval that on yearly basis, the homeowner association shall send to the planning board or the building inspector a report identifying cleanings or maintenance review of their systems. And I think we leave it at that, um, I mean, this is.
I couldn't agree with you more, Paul. Where, whereas if annual inspections are required, that something triggers the notification to these HOAs in the subdivisions that this has to be performed and by, by an independent inspector of some sort and send the report in. But yeah, you're right, I agree.
Could I offer what I know from how we do it in the Conservation Commission, especially for like, uh, Red Brook Estates, right? There, there's an example where um, we, we do a, we, they give us money that we put into a fund, we have a fund that's generated ever since the, the estate was established. And it, it, because they're so close to wetlands, it requires that they have a yearly inspection and there hasn't been any encroachment. And also included in that fund is any money that the Conservation Commission would need if, if we were to have to take legal action against the, the estate. So it is on, it is on the, the Conservation Commission in that case to, to be the monitoring agent.
But that only, that only applies to the ones that are in conservation areas, Dan, correct? It's not gonna affect some of the subdivisions or the residential ones that we have that, that don't have any connection with the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just giving you an example of, of, of a, of a committee or a commission in having to perform monitoring of, of a um, a subdivision for whatever reason. So this, this case happens to be for, for conservation reasons, for, it could be for other cases such as their stormwater management and their, their um, upkeep of the stormwater management system. I, I think um.
Keith, any, uh, any ideas from you on, on this for management?
Uh, not at the moment. Other than, this board isn't gonna do it.
Uh, I guess. Uh, sorry, I just, I just go back, do you ever hear the story of Johnstown, Pennsylvania, what happened there?
No, with the flood?
Yeah, the big flood in Johnstown, Pennsylvania, because there was, there was a dam that was owned by a, 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 a private property owners that, that built this dam on their property and they didn't maintain it over the years. And the result was eventually the dam collapsed and flooded the entire town, killing hundreds of people, so. You know, that, that's an extreme example, but you know, if you just rely on property owners to do the inspection of their own systems, it doesn't always uh, uh, protect all citizens in that, in that regard.
You know, and, and that's the.
So, so a lot of these subdivisions.
Go ahead, Paul.
I was, I was gonna say, so these subdivisions are typically closed systems, right? And they're, 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 they're not ones that are connected to these critical locations that impact human life. You know, that Jamestown thing, that was probably, what, over a hundred years ago?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's an extreme example, but.
You know, there's, there's, it's a very extreme and they, you know, we didn't have the parachutes or the mechanisms. Um, or they didn't have the, you know, those, those mechanisms that we have now. But you know, in, in terms of responsibility and things of that nature, I mean, physically, or, or I can tell you from my experience working with like communities and other um other municipalities, there's, there's not, not a whole lot of enforcement um, or what's the word I'm looking for?
Monitoring?
Proactive enforcements, yeah, and, right, so proactive monitoring, right?
Yep.
In terms of the community looking out for that type of thing, and obviously we hear about violations of, of wetland or stormwater handbook procedures or, or, or violation of, of, of certain Massachusetts law which always comes up, but in terms of these subdivisions and, and um, you know, looking and, and being proactive, I, I don't think there's much more we can do other than having a condition that forces their hand on a yearly basis to provide a handbook or a monitoring manual that says basically checks off this and it's signed off by a professional of sorts and it's their, it's their responsibility. So I think, you know, that's, that's why the world has.
No, no, I, 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 I see your, your, where you're coming from and I think it makes a lot of sense.
Well, I guess that language will have to be hammered out at the um public hearing, I, there's, there's so many pieces of paper here, I, I don't know if we can pull this off on Zoom and hopefully we could get back together at some point and. Do this.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I know that we've been active in the past with Larry helping us hammer out our zoning regulations, right? And the, the question I have is, is this a consideration that we could um, have a similar um, interaction, maybe we, we have Patty, we, we pair out of the planning boards. Um, I'm making suggesting, out of the pain, uh, planning boards funds, um, our coffers to help us kind of be the Larry uh, through this process where she'll be taking, you know, record of, of our recommendations and providing that kind of feedback, um, similar to Larry's involvement with the zoning regulations. That way, you know, obviously we're a volunteer board and this, this reduces our um involvement quite a bit, if, I think if she's sort of the quarterback. If, I think if she's sort of the quarterback of this particular, um, modification.
Did I hear her correctly, Cindy, at the last meeting though, that she said going forward, she would be available, but any, any further kind of consultation? Would that go to Ken Comia?
Uh, my understanding is what she said was that her contract ended.
Yeah.
That she, um, you know, is committed to seeing this go forward, but I did, I don't know that it's automatically going to go to Ken. Uh, her expertise lies in this area. Ken's is, um, slight modification of, of that. So he did, um, some, uh, work on the, um, I think the subdivision bylaw and some other things related to this. But no, I think hers is the MS four expertise. So we can engage her if that's, that is my understanding. If Paul Fergal is suggesting we might like to have more in, involvement from her, it would be, you know, over and above what her contract was. And, you know, we'd have to, you know, pay her appropriately, I suppose.
Well, what if, to minimize what we've got to pay, because she's already done a ton of work on this, you people. I was only suggesting if, if there's any way that the board members could go through this. And I have, and I've highlighted the areas like section F, number eight, section G, number three, section I, number, uh, one and number 12. I've gone through where I had questions about the, uh, role of the planning board in this. And that's, if, if we could go through, highlight the areas where we see the language we want changed, then if everybody got that to me, I could probably put it into a document that then we could work on and have a discussion of how to hammer out the language on that. And then, um, give it to her to incorporate in the document. Or make those changes at the public hearing. And so we're not, we're not, uh, having her work on this two or three different times. Because the public hearing is going to be the final say where maybe somebody from the public comes in or a different department and wants to have some language change. So I'm just trying to minimize, um, the cost associated with it.
And, and, and that's a very good point, Paul. Um, reduce, you know, try to minimize the cost. I think one of my biggest concerns that I have, and this was kind of mentioned last time, is the overlap and potential conflicts that might arise with our ongoing uh, zoning regulation update. And what I'm trying to get at is she's a, she's, she's, she's a planner, in my opinion, in terms of her, uh, professional, uh, capacity. Can you go downstairs, please? Can you go downstairs, please? Go downstairs, that is on the meeting, okay? Can you downstairs? I don't know, it's in the other room, okay? Sorry about that.
Set your priorities straight there, Paul, you know.
Seriously, I know. I just gotta kick him, kick him out.
To be having him knocking his door down.
Uh, so where I'm going, yeah, where I'm going with this is, just to summarize this quickly, because sometimes I talk too much. Um, what I want to say is, I, I think we need someone to help us marry the two, okay? Because I think there's a lot of points, as, as I remember, that we, that the, that the stormwater body or the MS four body wasn't able to answer because it was directly linked to some of the conditions that are identified in our, in our zoning regulations. So I think if we hire her to assist to get the two together so they're not conflicting, I think that's going to be very important. And the wheels just fell off. With my kids here, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, that our current bylaw and this have been married together, correct, Cindy?
Ask that question one more time. What, what'd you say?
The way I look at this 39-page document, it is the, it, it's incorporated in our current bylaw and the changes and the additions made. So, so what she has presented is a rewrite of, of what we currently have. And when we, if we do that with her now with her expertise, when we, uh, get to this section with Larry Smith and the other bylaws, that's done.
Yeah. Pl- please remember what it said at the end of the PowerPoint. I know you pulled that up before and I, I'm looking at it my, on my other computer. There were, in her, in her PowerPoint presentation, there were questions that couldn't be answered. I could not answer them in, in the various meetings. So that's one thing. That's number one. Secondly, there was modification of language. These are sort of administrative things. Thirdly, there was engineering review of regulations. Well, now we have, uh, you know, three engineers on our, on our planning board. So if you feel that the engineering review of regulations as presented in this document, and I'm talking about the draft documents, are absolutely solid and, and without concern, then you don't need to go further if you feel you've reviewed these. I know Paul Fergal came to a couple of meetings and that was helpful. Then the next thing is public hearing in advance of town meeting. But the first three PowerPoint suggestions, the first one is answers to questions, the questions that I could not answer. So if you could go back to look at those questions in her presentation and in the draft document, those are really important at this point. Start there.
You want me to, where were you, where were you at, right here?
No, no, it's in the draft document. It's in, it's in, it's in the side column. It's in the, the right side, you know, questions.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Okay, yeah. Well, there's some of it, but you had document draft one and two up earlier. And you had side columns on those.
Yeah, with the comments, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, has everyone else, I know Dan looked at this, has, have Paul and Keith and you had a chance to look at the side comments to make sure that there's things that are, uh, consistent with your expertise uh, or can be answered easily. That, that's where you start.
I haven't. The last time I looked at this was maybe four weeks ago, prior to the meeting I couldn't attend. And I had a couple of minor comments, but I'll, I'll make a point to run through those documents.
Yeah. I, I, I think, Paul Demon, the next thing to do is to invite Keith and Paul Fergal and Dan to go back to those documents and look at those and see if there's things that are easily answered. And you, and with a combination of their, their, their engineering background and their, and their history on the board, really, and yours too. And then the next step would be to discuss it. I think we're, we're kind of going in three or four different directions right now. And then be sure we're all, we, we as a board are all on the same page with what's been presented to us now. If we have further questions, consider engaging or re-engaging Patty to help us with those. That, that, to me, is the next step after that. And then set up for the public hearing and, um, maybe have that occur early in 2021 or something like that.
Paul, can you email us that, uh, that PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, yeah. I can do that.
You, you got them right there, Paul. You're good. That, you scroll up just a teeny bit on that. Yeah. Answers to questions, modification of lang- engineering review, public hearing, council review. That means, you know, legal counsel. And then town meeting and then us, adopt a new stormwater bylaw. Revise, revise stoning, excuse me, revise zoning. That's where we, uh, integrate with what Larry's been working with us on. And then go finally to public hearing and adopting the stormwater regs, revised subdivision regs. And to me, we need to, and I don't have it in front of me right this second, what are the, what are the timings on all of this? We want to be time sensitive because of the, the requirements within the state.
Yeah. Well, that was a question I had. Did Patty say that it's got to be in place by June 2021?
I'm going to have to go back and look at that. It's in there, but I'll look.
I think it's on the, I think, I think it's in the beginning of this PowerPoint you're looking at.
Yeah, hold on. I'm looking in my other computer for that.
I mean, obviously, to- town meeting has to be executed, right? In order for this to be.
Yeah. And we gotta, we gotta get on the warrant. You know very well that all of this is so different than previous years because of everything else, um, worked today by laws.
Must be completed four years from permit effective date, June 30, 2022. What's that?
That's specific to, um, hold on. So there's additional requirements from the original, uh, rules and regs. So we have up until June 30, 2022 for adding those additional requirements. That's, um, I think three on the PowerPoint. Um, and then, and, and, and then one of the other things that came up frequently in this, in these meetings was our, uh, our permit document. Is it, is it, does it say what we wanted to say? And if I recalled that Larry had presented to us a draft permit document to be more sort of, you know, global and comprehensive for a lot of different things. And I, I need to have somebody look at that, make sure that's what we, we want, that would be consistent with all of this too.
Are you telling me there's another document in, in addition to what's put together here?
I think she looked only at the documents that are on our website. She only looked at those.
That's, that's all we have.
Right. And she wonders if they, if they ask enough questions. So, all right. I don't know where, what number it is. Scroll down a little bit, Paul. Scroll, keep going down on that PowerPoint. Yeah, right there. Hold on. Uh.
Well, that's always been confusing to me, the two, there's two permit applications. Erosion sediment control and then stormwater management, but.
All right. Now go down one more, uh, screen, one more. And it says bylaw and regulations, questions. Keep going. Down. Yep, there it is. Okay. So there was inconsistencies between, um, the permit procedures and regu- and regu- requirements. And, um, question, do we want to shorten the timeline? Okay. Um, right now, I gotta change this on my Zoom thing. Hold on a second. Cause I can't read the whole thing. All right. So stormwater permit subdi- uh, 65 days. And then we have up to 90 days to decide and make a final action. But then subdivision definition plan approval says after 45 days, the Board of Health period is to report. And decision is 90 days. I mean, there, there seems to be some inconsistencies on some of these. And she's got questions there. And then G, right there, site supervision and inspections. Do we, do you, the planning board, want to sign off and give approval for inspection reports? Should that be something under the, um, planning board's responsibility?
Well, it has been.
Is that clear? Is that clear on the, on the current application? Is that clear?
I know about the application, but I'm, I'm sure it's in the, the current regs about signing off on it.
So.
Final inspections.
Once again, we need to go back to the application to make sure there's consistency through, throughout.
Well, that's what I thought part of this process was about. And she, she also alluded to that about making a new application form with a checklist with all that on it.
I don't, she's in, she offered to make a new application. I think she's pointing out the inconsistencies for us.
Well, if they're inconsistent, then I would expect that.
I told her what I understood from Larry Smith, that he was proposing to us a new application for, you know, sort of a global action, application on a number of things.
That, that was strictly for a zoning application.
Okay, then, then maybe I made a, maybe.
For special, for special permits.
Okay, then maybe I made a mistake, because I thought it was much more global than that.
No. Um, I'm sure it could be, uh, included on there. I don't have a copy of it right in front of me. In fact, I've asked Ed Gibson three times now to, uh, bring that to the Board of, uh, the Select Board for approval. Because right now, to be quite honest with you, we don't have applications for a couple of different special permits, including an RMD, which is coming before us in a couple of weeks.
Remind me what R, what does RMD stand for? Remind that me.
Retail marijuana distributor.
Oh, right, okay.
So, so Larry, the reason Larry wanted the zoning application, it would encompass any special permit that's in our regs.
Yeah.
And, um.
So go back to, to, go back to Ed and say this is critical, time-wise.
Well, of course it is. And that way there, it's in the building inspector's office. So when someone comes in, all he has to do is hand in this one form, they fill it out and check the applicable boxes about what they're doing. Whether it's an A and R, it's an accessory apartment, if it's a subdivision, um, solar panels, whatever. It's, it's comprehensive on, on everything. And I'm, I'm sure stormwater could be included on it.
So you're in agreement that there's needs at minimal tweaking and maybe even much more overview or improvement on these permits?
And applications.
And application permits, yeah.
But also forms for supervision and inspections, uh, an operation and maintenance plan and a, uh, completion form with a performance guarantee. You know, there was, there were several areas on that where if all these steps are required for inspections and, uh, oversight, let's have a form for it so we can sign off with it.
So if you go through this PowerPoint, which you are looking at it now, you see question marks all over the place. Those are things that need answering.
I will resubmit this to everybody.
Yep. So we have a, so we have an RMD for the next meeting, um, on the 60.
Yeah, let me, let me get out of, excuse me.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Are you, so are you looking for guidance on the open questions in this PowerPoint? As well as the two documents? Is that what needs to be done to move this forward?
This PowerPoint, this PowerPoint is a, um, was, was given, was presented to us by our Pioneer Valley Planning Commission consultant. Her name is Patty Gamborini.
I think you saw that, Dan. You were present.
Yep.
Oh, you were there for that? Oh, sorry. And, um, you know, many questions came up during the discussion. Questions I could not answer, sorry to say. So what she did was she inserted these questions into the PowerPoint. Some of these questions probably are easily answered. Some of them may take more research. And so they, it's not like one is, it's not like they're totally separate. They, they intersect.
Okay, but, but I guess if we were going to follow the plan that you laid out in the PowerPoint, it was to get the questions answered, then we would be able to, I guess, have some review and then move it off to, uh, the town meeting. And so I, I guess I'm just trying to understand what we do to, to, to move it forward.
Well, as I suggested, you, you look at the PowerPoint, that's one, one way to start. And then, um, scan through the, draft of the bylaw itself for any language you want to get changed. I, I couldn't. I, I couldn't waste my time with the technical aspects to it, because it's greased to me. I focused on anything that I saw Southampton Planning Board, any language of that, and that's what I, I focused on about what our responsibilities are. None of the technical data.
Okay, so that's kind of like the homework we need to do, thinking of, to get, to, to help facilitate and, and complete this, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll send that PowerPoint off, and I'm, I'm assuming you all have a copy, I can resend it, but I think I've sent everybody a copy of that, what Patty had presented.
I'm going to ask a question I asked a couple of meetings ago. We have engineers on our board, we have Paul Fergal, we have Keith, we have Dan. This third bullet point at the end of the PowerPoint says engineering review. I know you three are extremely busy in your, in your professional lives, you're not being compensated for this, you're volunteers. Is this the way to go? Or do we need to send this out for a peer review to an engineer?
I like the second idea.
I like the second idea, but I don't like the costs associated with it.
So I don't know what it'll cost, we know we've got, you know.
I don't think they should go out to an engineering peer review, I think this is something that we can answer as a board.
Okay.
With Patty being the facilitator of the, the, the particulars in there. I, I think that's something that would be, I would find extremely beneficial for us to reengage her, rather than going to peer review, I think her rates are going to be much less than, you know, paying somebody, I think she's like, you know, say eighty bucks an hour or whatever, I don't know what that number is. But if you go to VHB, you know, if we go to another consultant, that's minimum, you look at, you know, John Furman coming in, that's like a hundred, a hundred and eighty-five bucks an hour. So, I, I think, you know, having her come in, and us making a decision as a board, using our technical knowledge, I, I think would be cost-effective.
Yeah, I agree with Paul, I was just joking before, I was trying to save doing work, you know?
Personally, I think, this is, the engineering terms on this, this has been engineered quite, quite well by whomever she had adopted, you might, I don't know what you guys think about it, but I think any, any responsibilities and enforcement and inspections and stuff falls far greater than the, the engineering aspect to that, because she probably picked that up as a guide from somewhere else.
Exactly. That's why I think it's a little lifting on the, on the engineering part.
Yeah. Well, so we don't beat this to death anymore and get bored with it tonight. Look it over again, we'll address it, was, I'm not quite sure I can guarantee we'll address it the next meeting because of the RMD, I'm going to ask, because of a public hearing, but we'll certainly revisit it again. And if, if you want, feel free to send me your comments, the sections and the paragraphs, and then I can put that together and then send it out, and then we can probably use that as a template going forward to see if we can address some of this language. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, just a couple of minor things, there was a building permit that came through shortly after our last meeting, it was by Mr. Seraphin, a builder for a parcel on eighty-five Russellville Road, and the area disturbance was a little under twenty-three thousand square feet, so I signed off on that for him to get that processed without him waiting another two weeks. The High Street Scenic Road discussion is still ongoing, Ed Gibson had gotten me information about it, there is no bylaw, general bylaw on the books, here we have scenic roads in Southampton, and we don't know how they got designated as such, Ed, Ed couldn't find a bylaw, but he did do some research on how it should be done, and naturally, it has to go through public hearing, the butters of High Street have to be notified, the legal ads have to be placed, and after the hearing, it goes on the town warrant for town to vote on it. So there's costs associated with this, so I asked, who's going to be the sponsor of it? So a resident of High Street came forward with it before, and I wrote her an email and asked her if she was a group of residents of High Street that wanted this designation, and oddly enough, she said she was the only one. So I said, geez, do you, you think you might be able, if you spread the word there, maybe come up with some donations so we can defer the costs on this for the, for the legal ads? Because otherwise, this board is going to be the sponsor of it on a request from a neighbor of High Street, and we're going to be responsible for the cost, so.
I mean, I think this is relatively, I think it's low on the totem pole, me, I mean, for me personally, in terms of us making an effort to, to do anything with this, all the, all the scenic road designation does is it creates a delay on potential repairs, tree cutting, or removal of walls, that, that's it. So, I mean, I, I just think we have bigger issues to tackle this year. So I just, that, that's my opinion.
No, I agree, Keith, you're right, it's not high in the poll, I just, someone's great thoughts and ideas for this designation comes and say, okay, but, but we want you to sponsor it, yeah, well, it costs money for us to do it, because it'd be different if there's only ten of butters of High Street, I don't know how long High Street is, but there's quite a few of butters on it.
Are we sure we need a bylaw? That is a Massachusetts general law, it's section.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's what Ed, Ed said, general, a general law, but in order to designate it, that's the process that has to go through, so.
There, there's a little more background on this, it's in the master plan and in the open space and recreation plan update, we already have, I think, eight or nine roads designated, probably at town meetings of gosh knows when, maybe even before my time, and I'm pretty old. But what Ed told us in the open space and recreation plan update meeting last week was that he was going to do exactly what Paul just said, he was going to research out, find out if we ever, you know, fully complied with what is necessary to meet the Mass General Law requirements, and it sounds like Southampton hasn't done that. I don't know why that's costly to an individual or costly to a specific board, it sounds to me like a town cost, or, you know, whether we know, go forward and create a bylaw that will then allow, there's all these other roads, Cold Spring, East Street, Gunn, Manhattan, Maple, Mountain Road, Rattle Hill, Russellville, those are already listed as scenic roads in our, in these two documents that I just mentioned. From my standpoint, it should not fall a hundred percent on the planning board, it should be, the planning board either agrees or disagrees, we agreed, when, when that particular resident, I think you're talking about Paul, we agreed, fine, it should be a scenic road, then bounce that back to town administrator to bring before Select Board or something, and whether it needs to, you know, be a, a bylaw change, then we, we get told, please write, please draft a bylaw, that's where I think it lies at this point.
Well, I'm going to table it for now, there's nothing I can do about it, but I just, I wanted more thought going into it, because it wasn't our idea, and I, again, our funds are limited, that's why they spoke three or four times tonight about costs, I have to be careful with our budget, because we, you know, we've got bylaws to rewrite, and the pot has been shrinking, and we're not quite as flush as we used to be, because there hasn't been a lot of subdivisions coming down the pike lately, so.
Do you give a treasurers report, just so I would understand what our budget even is at some point in the meeting?
I, I can give you one next meeting, Dan, or else I can email you, and it's on the, it's on the Finance Committee of the Accountant's Office, shows our accounts, and we have like, only two of them, a peer review account, which is pretty much zero, because whatever comes in goes out for the peer review. And then we have a revolving fund where all the rest of our money goes for permits and such, so, and because right now, we're kind of self-sustaining, we are, we are not, we are not given a budget by the town, that was taken away from us a few years ago, when we did have quite a bit of money in the bank, and they were tight on, on the budget, they said, well, jeez, it looks like you don't need anything to operate with, given what your bank balance was, so, right now, right now, we're going on just what we take in, we're not given any money from the town.
Okay, thank you, so one of those things I was curious about, just being new.
Okay, now the RMD, we received the application, I was away on vacation, but I had kind of did some preliminary work on it, Volcan.
Polte.
Pol, Polatol. Yeah, and the corporation is called Dreamer, Inc., has filed for an RMD, they've got the post-agreement with the town, and they've got the go-ahead from Mass. They wanted to do this six months ago, but because of this COVID and everything, so we've been asked to move it along, so we're, we're going to attempt to do that via Zoom, Larry Smith is going to be our consultant on this, and it's going to be the next meeting, the sixteenth, the legal ads just ran yesterday, the first one, so, so that's all set to go. And we'll see where that takes us, it'll be our first one, I'm sure it's going to take more than one meeting, but I will say that Larry has already done his pre-meetings with the town departments, he had that, I think, last Thursday, so he's already met with town departments, and we're going to have him be our point person going forward on this on the sixteenth. Other than that, speaking of Larry Smith, similar to Pioneer Valley, he gives us a contract every year for a new fiscal, and he sent his contract for us to approve, and I have to send that to the town accountant to sign, but it gives his scope of work that he'll do for us going forward this year, when, when contracted, scope of services. Termination of agreement for cause, it's pretty much similar to the one PVPC set out, I'm sure he used that as a, as a template. So I'm, ask your approval for me to sign a contract to engage Larry Smith for the coming year for miscellaneous consulting.
Can I ask what, what's going forward as far as the zoning bylaw reviews process? What's, what's, is that in there?
Well, that's part of the scope of services, but there's, there's nothing going on until we tell him to pick up the ball again and run with it.
Is he on board with Zoom meetings, even when he's in Mexico?
Well, he was, he was, he was kind of apprehensive, because this is new to him too, but I told him, we've been having him, and we've, we're getting along with him, I'm still fumbling around, but we're, we're doing okay, so he, he, he agreed, he's going to, this might be his first one for all I know, but we'll find out.
Okay.
For now, I'd like a motion on his contract.
I move to accept Larry's contract.
Second.
Motion is made in second, Ed, for Larry Smith's contract for FY21, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, I'll ask your approval for a warrant from VHB for the ongoing inspection services contract that we signed with him for Fitch Farm and Gill Farm, and he's just sending through, his, his original proposal was around five thousand dollars for each one for all the inspections of the subdivisions, and currently, these invoices are four hundred and fifty each for Gill Farm and Fitch Farm. Right now, Fitch Farm, he has done eighteen hundred dollars worth of work, with this invoice, it'll be twenty-two fifty, and with Gill Farm, it's twenty-three, twenty-five, so he's like, according to the billing, it's like forty-five to forty-six percent of the proposal that he put in for inspection services so far for each one of those. So this total bill is nine hundred dollars.
So these get bounced back to the developer, right?
Correct.
So, we don't, I'm sorry, can I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
So technically, the developer should be paying us first, and we pay the consultant, so we're not stuck?
I've asked both, I sent them out a notice with a copy of the proposals a couple months ago for the five thousand dollars, waiting for it to be prepaid upfront, and to date, I haven't gotten anything from either one, but I sent out a second notice, but.
So, Paul, I mean, this is, this is an action by the building inspector to shut, to shut, to pull their permit, I mean, to, we, we pull their permit if they don't pay us, I mean, this is, this is a classic, this is a classic move, you know, by some developers by not paying us, so, I mean, I, I'm, I'm shocked that they haven't paid us yet, not shocked, but surprised, you know, in other communities, the way I've seen this, usually that's paid front, front before construction starts, and the fact that they haven't reimbursed us for this, and we're paying out of our pocket, I don't pay, you know, I don't, I don't object to paying VHB, but the fact of matter is, it's, it's kind of, you know, we're at risk now.
Yeah, understood, understood.
Can we pull their bond?
I'll look into it, but I, I like your actions, you were suggesting to begin with, because, you know, we have other, we have other avenues to, to attach them in the end, but I'll, I'll give them your recommendation about the building inspector interrupting some of their work.
Can you, I, I guess me, me to say that, and I'm not trying to shoot from the hip, and I, I'm kind of looking back at that as a potential statement that might not have any teeth, but is that something that a big building inspector can do, is threaten to, to shut down on our behalf for not paying, I mean, I guess for not paying, yes, but I guess I'm just circling my, my thoughts here.
I'm, I'm sure he could probably do it on a recommendation from, from us, but I see other avenues in, in our bonds, and the, whatever else we have for street acceptance to hold them in abeyance if they don't. I'm, I'm pretty well, I'm pretty well comfortable that Fitch Farm is going to be remitting theirs this week, the Gill Farm one, they stopped construction there weeks ago, as I mentioned before, because they, they're doing another project in Connecticut somewhere, so, in fact, John Furman sent me a note the other day about a correspondence he had with them about a, when they were going to continue to pick up construction over there, and they hadn't replied to them yet, so that one's a little more up in the air.
So I guess we should probably take an accounting note of this, in case, if, if we do vote to pay VHB out of our funds, then this is something we would pull out of a bond if, if it. then this is something we would pull out of a bond if, if a developer stops building.
Absolutely. Do you want to, do you want to, make an amendment on this to approve the bill that if it is not reimbursed, we just attach the bond?
Do we, do we need to put any dates or any sunsets on this? I mean, this is, I mean, do we need to have dates on this? Do we say they have 30 days to pass? And if not, then I don't know. This is something that a professional planner would be able to help us answer.
I'll check, I'll check with, I'll check with Larry on that for any teeth that we might have on, on that. Again, I'm not worried about Fitch Farm and Ryan Gielher, but I am concerned about Gill Farm.
Agreed. I, I'm sorry, I think Gielher's got a lot to lose if he was to do something.
But again, when I, when I sent a second notice to him, he didn't recall getting the first proposal. So I resent it the other day. So he has it now.
Well, sometimes developers, you know, use consultants as banks. So now they're using towns.
So do I have a motion so I can pay VHB $900 for their services?
Well, if he's done the service, I move that we pay VHB.
If we can add a condition. This gets noted, add a condition that this gets noted against potential bond. Pulling the bond if this is not reimbursed to us in 30 days.
I'll make that part of the motion. Yeah, do I have a second on that?
Sure.
So Cindy, you made the motion, but Paul, I'll make note of that. And you want to second that motion for the amendment about the attachment?
Who would second that?
That's you, anyone?
I can second it if you want.
All right, Dan, we'll take your, we'll take your, and we'll second, like, Dan. Motion by Cindy.
I didn't realize I could second myself.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have any reports for any committees of your liking, Cindy?
My liking? A couple of good, good things to tell you. You know, we've, we've wrapped up the, what we're calling the Community Engagement Survey, which ended on August 31st, which was to prioritize what people in this town want to do in 2020 relative to the 2013 master plan. We don't have the final data on that. That's being compiled right now by Ken Comia from PVPC, and that's through the DLTA grant. I got to be very excited to tell you that we got almost 900 responses. The goal was to get 10%. Well, we have approximately 4,400 registered voters in our town. So that would have been like, you know, under 500. And we're up to 900, approximately 900 responses. So we're pretty excited.
That is very good, yeah.
Very excited about that. So stand by for another meeting for report on, you know, where the town felt the priority should be for implementation. These are not new, these are not new goals and strategies that are strictly implementing what was already in the 2013 master plan. The Open Space Committee is now an official open space committee, not ad hoc to the select board any longer. And we are really kind of actively involved in understanding what would be lands to be looked at for potential conservation in our town and how we want to go forward on that. So that's just a process underway right now. And that was part of the charge that the select board gave to the Open Space Committee when it became a regular town committee. It's an appointed committee. And as of right now, I'm still the appointee from the select board. Dan's expressed a lot of interest in this. And so I understand from Dan LaValle that he, he least hopes to attend this going forward. And I know he's, you know, that's great if he's interested in being a part of that. Specific to that, we have seen the formation of a Friends of Open Space Committee in town. Of course, that's not a border committee, either elected or appointed. It's, it's separate from that. They've been actively forming. They've got a website. They've come up with a logo that's coming forward. And I think COVID kind of hit their activities like it did a lot of people. So they kind of slowed down a little bit. But, you know, we know that there's a lot of interest in our town to, to support open space conservation and preservation. And what was the other one? Oh, Open Space and Recreation Plan. So the good news there is that we've completed the final draft. The next step is that that goes to posting for town comments. So if you have a chance and are so inclined to read the updated Open Space and Recreation Plan, that's going to be on the town website coming forward. And we, the timing on that is that the state, DCS, will approve that hopefully. Planning Board and Conservation Commission will be asked, as you've done, as we've done in the past, to, you know, write a letter in support of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. So anybody here can look at that, read it. It's, it's a fine enough document. It's not highly different than the previous ones. It's a very important document for us to have in our town. And a letter, I think you're going to receive, Paul, a draft letter of, you know, maybe that should be on the agenda next time too, just to see if we, the planning board, endorse that. And so you can sign off on that. That's it.
Send me a reminder on that for the next agenda.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep, that's it.
I don't have anything else. Is anyone else?
Hey, so Marla gave me stuff from the Conservation Commission because she said, hey, can you bring these things up for me? So she might have already mentioned them to you. She wanted to know if there's been a number assigned for 61 Gunn Road. I believe that was.
Isn't it 61 Gunn Road?
Well, no, no, sorry. They split it. Who's on first, right?
That's a side-by-side lot, right, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, they split the lot. And her question was if, if the number had been assigned for the new lot that is formed out of that lot splitting.
She would have gotten a copy of that A and R. And if not, it's over in the assessor's office.
Okay, I'll tell her that because for whatever reason, she wanted, she didn't know the answer. So she wanted to have me ask. So assessor's office.
Yeah, usually she always gets a copy, conservation of A and Rs we do with the, with the street numbers. So.
Yes, she could have just been busy and missed it or something.
Well, she's got a lot of plans too, but check with assessors on it.
Yep. I'm not sure that that came before us, Paul. The 61 Gunn Road, did that one come before the planning board already?
We've done two or three over there, and I don't have them right at my fingertips to know which one we've done.
Okay. She called me about that, and I, I don't want to confuse the issue. But there was one that she had questions about where there was a split lot. And if it doesn't come before the planning board, we, we haven't assigned any new numbers to it, obviously. So it won't be in the assessor's office. So, you know, Dan, you can have her check that, but.
It'd be, it'd be the pipers or the owners of it, so.
Yeah, and we did, we've done two for them that I recall.
Oh, okay.
Cool.
Okay.
She wanted to know if you had heard anything from Greg Felton of 32 High Street?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, I'll tell her that.
What's that in regard to?
Uh, that's, that's in regards to, what did he do? He put in, he put in his own culvert and he cleared a bunch of trees, a bunch of stuff he wasn't supposed to do. And, yeah, he has to, he has to get, he has to do some wetland re, re, reinstillation. And there must be some connection with your, with this board for that as well.
Yeah, if he, if he increased.
Oh, yeah, that's right. He increased, he doubled the size of his, his land or open space.
Yeah, well, if he, he disturbed more than what he was supposed to. I know that was issued several years ago. And if he, he might be, it sounds like he might be in for stormwater too.
Right, so she wanted to know if you had heard anything from him because.
Nothing.
We have active, we have an, an open action against him, so.
Is the building inspector aware of that disturbance too? That might be double what he was originally granted?
I don't, I don't know. That's, that's a Marla question, you know, I'm just a peon.
Your last name again was Felton?
Felton, yeah, 30, 32 High Street.
I'll check with Ron Lauren.
And then the other one was if you had, had anything with 71 Whitelove Road? And the lot size and then the, if that had brought, been brought to your attention, the, the extra, geez, I don't even know how many square feet they cleared. Couple extra acres.
71 Whitelove?
Yeah. And that was her list.
I'll check, I'll inquire about, I knew about 32 High Street from months ago. And I'll inquire about that, but I'll have to look into 71 Whitelove.
Yeah, she said she had a longer list, but she didn't want to overwhelm you.
But again, she, if she notices, or any town resident for that matter, notices land being disturbed in excess of what they've already got, that, you know, that should be brought to the building inspector's attention immediately. You know, he's the enforcement officer. And from there, he would direct him to our board, Dan. But that's usually the, the chain of command there, how that goes.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll tell her that.
Anything else?
Those are the three things she, she told me.
Thank you. If nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
And so put the 16th on your calendar because that'll be our first one. And I'm sure, given the nature of it and the, there's a lot of stuff going on there, that could take a couple of meetings, if not three, before that's put to rest and issued. So keep that on your calendar.
Can I just ask a question? I'm sorry, we already adjourned. But do we have responsibility for voting on chairperson, et cetera? I mean, I know that happens in other committees.
Yeah, we do. Now that the election is over, I've lost track of it, but yeah.
It's in, it's in May, isn't it? We do this in May, right?
Well, because of the COVID, the town election was delayed until yesterday. So we can, we can address that anytime going forward.
So maybe that could be on the next agenda briefly. Wouldn't take long because, because I'm going to vote for you, Paul, so. Paul Damon, yeah.
You can have this and all this three feet of paper I have.
Hey, Paul, you're on a good ship.
You do.
So far. All right.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, good night. Have, stay well, having a good couple of weeks.
Happy Labor Day.
Thank you, sir.
Take care of them.
Take care.
Thanks, Dan, welcome.
Thanks again, yeah.
I'll, I'll send you stuff as I go along.
Take care, guys.
Night.
Bye.
Okay, thanks for straightening that Gmail up.
Yeah, no problem.
I got, I got a notice that you tapped into it. You're really good about being vigilant on that.
Oh, yeah.
All right, take care.
See ya.
Good night.